What's up? I'm all right, I guess.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending this evening of the City of Union Town's regular city council meeting. Sorry we're running a little bit late, but again, thank you all for attending. Roll call?
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mayor Durkey?
Here. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We were in executive session at four o'clock today for Personnel Matters. Before we get started, I just have a few things that I'd like to bring everyone's attention to. Number one, the city lost a good man here last month, Mr. Joe Giacchetti. He was our treasurer for quite a few years and a city councilman and really gave his heart and soul to the whole city long before I came along. I met Joe and I didn't know who he was and I thought, wow, he really cares about this city. And as the years went on, I developed a good friendship with Joe and would all like to keep Joe's family in our prayers. Number two, Bobby Smith, probably a 30-year employee of the city. You'll see it on the agenda this evening. I don't know which number it is, but Bobby's going to retire and we want to wish him well and thank you for all the service to the City of Union Town. And talking about retirements, Ms. Kim Marshall's going to retire. And what a wealth of information and guidance to everyone that sits at this table and anyone that ever sat at this table. I'm not good with words, Kim, but wow, thank you and we're surely going to miss Kim Marshall here because like the last two years, every day I'd come down to City Hall, probably go down and see the chief and make my way up here and spend an hour with Kim and she, any question I had or any question that anyone has, Kim has an answer for it and we're surely going to miss you, but good luck in your retirement and thank you again, Kim.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. And that's all I have. Comments on agenda items only. Before we get started, I would just like to say, I see we have a lot of people here today and I'm sure a lot of people want to talk and that's great, that's what we like to see. And there's a lot on our agenda, so be respectful of everybody's time and we'll try to keep it, we don't have a time limit on comments on agenda items only, but try to keep it to a, get your point across and we'll get some comments in and move on to the next one. Thank you. So at this time, comments on agenda items only. Ma'am, if you'd come to the podium and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Hansick. I reside at 24 Robinson Street. I'm just addressing two items this evening on the agenda. The first one is item number 37, to approve a proposal from Destiny's Tailing Oasis Initiative for community fruit tree planting. First off, I want to thank Destiny for her involvement in our community. It's refreshing and inspiring to have people in our community who show an interest in helping and bettering our city. People like Destiny and the members of the Parks and Recreation Board are the heart of our city. We can learn a lot from these people. Once our parks are more established and maintained, I would be willing and happy, more than happy to volunteer my time with this project. These are achievable goals if we all work together. This brings me to item number 63, to disband the Parks and Recreation Board. Dismantling the Parks and Recreation Board would not only jeopardize the future of our parks and also send a distressing message to our community members. It would also signal the lack of commitment to preserving the green spaces that define our city and disregard for the well-being of our citizens. Instead of dismantling, let us invest in our Parks and Recreation programs. This is a no-brainer. Recognizing them as essential components of a thriving city, let us empower the Parks and Recreation Board to continue their vital work of stewardship and enhancement. Together, let us ensure that the future of generations inherit parks that are not just preserved and enriched for the enjoyment and benefit. I urge you to reconsider this proposal and stand with our community in preserving our Parks and Parks and Recreation Board. In conclusion, the only way our city will thrive and prosper is to work together. We have amazing people in this community, amazing, all across the community. You guys need to listen to this. We have amazing people. We need to work together to all thrive and prosper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll address that. As far as the disbandment and that item, I wasn't the only one feeling that way. Let me just say that. This, I came into my office in January, I think I probably should stand up at the podium and say what I've got to say, but I'll sit here. The Parks and Recreation Board was already in effect. I thought to myself, this would be a great idea actually because we've got more people to help bring this community together and have some fun for the community. That's in my mind, so I gave it a chance. There's a clear disconnect. People are thinking of a board as, oh, you could tell me what you're going to do and you can go over my head and go to the mayor because you feel the mayor's running things and what you say is going to go, that's disrespectful because I am the director. We are to work together. And I need everybody to have a clear understanding on this board because I have, I can and if we can disband you, I need you to understand that. And what I mean by disbandment is get some team players to understand that there's not one person in charge of that, as far as the board, I'm the director. If I need help, I'll go to the mayor. So if I'm not in agreement with something, stop arguing because I have a right as well. I have a vision as well. I'm somebody from this community. I'm not a politician. I ran because of the same issues you got. The same issues you have. The conditions of our parks, the recreation for our children, our families, we have none of it. That's why I ran. So you're not going to discredit me in my direction and I wish and I hope and I pray that you work with me. I'm not trying to get rid of you, oh, because. I need you to understand that I'm the director. I'm the director. You're not going to be able to go to a council member and say, and they'll say, okay, yeah, well, and they're not going to, and they'll go against my wishes. That's not how council works, that's not how it works. And it's just not fair. And what I want to ask you guys, trust me. Give me a chance. Trust me. Work with me because I was elected to this seat. There was thousands of people to put me here, not just that board. I know what the community's asking because like I said, I'm in the community. I live here. But there has to be some level of understanding. I don't answer to a board. That's not how it works. You're not going to argue with me and tell me what I'm going to do or tell me what we're going to do this anyway and put stuff on the agenda because you go over my head and put stuff on here that, first of all, you put something on an agenda that wasn't even planned out. There is no lease in it, you know, we've got to table a lot of things and it's not going to be no disrespect to my brother standing right there because, but it's not planned out. So you're putting the cart before the horse. Now I just need everybody to pace themselves and understand there's waves to this and please understand that. You put the cart before the horse, there's no lease agreement in front of me, I'm not going to vote on something that's incomplete. I'm not. So it has to be tabled and I hope it gets tabled, but I'm just saying. We have to work together and I want to, I know what you're saying, young lady back there, I get it. I wasn't the only one thinking that way. Just know that. So it wasn't out of spite, it wasn't out of, oh, I just don't want, you know, don't want to work with you guys, okay? I want to work with you guys. I think we could be a power team, honestly, if everybody understands the chain of command. That's all I want y'all to do. There's a chain of command, y'all have your ordinances, we'll meet later on tonight, you'll understand what your roles are and then we'll be good and I hope we can move forward and hit the ground running hard. That's why that item's on here and I wasn't the only one that, you know, was talking about it. But at the end of the day, we changed our mind and said, let's try. So this is, this is not even a lead. I'm going to try. We're going to try. Then we try. If not, just say no now. And honestly, you know, Jared, he's like going to disband, but we could definitely replace, I guess, I don't know. Just, but if you're not willing to work with me, then say no.
If I can. So this did not garner a second, so it's not even on the.
Yeah, it's not even going on here. So just say.
It's, uh, no one on council supports this.
No, that's not true.
Nobody on council supports this?
Jared, that's not true. That's not true. That's not true. It's on agenda. The mayor was supporting it.
So.
He said, okay, and then we talked.
So let me, let me go ahead and just say this in defense of the mayor. The mayor's the only person on council that can place a resolution without a second. He can also, that person can also take something off when we meet. Now, and I've had conversations with Bill about this, the mayor, and in previous, with previous, we have a previous mayor in here as well. And if a council person wants to bring something to the table and doesn't have another council person a second, you know, the mayor allows that to go on. That doesn't necessarily mean that the mayor supports it.
Jared, you're misspeaking. You're misspeaking and I need you to stop because I had a meeting with the mayor and you won't sit here and call me a liar. I had a meeting in the mayor's office and we discussed how it's not a good idea and how in the past and what's going on now, but then we said, let's try to make it work.
Absolutely.
And you said that we came to that long after I told Kim to put it on there. You're speaking on the conversation, you don't know anything about, sir. And I don't like that and I just, please don't, don't do that because the mayor knows what I'm talking about and I'm far, I'm not a liar. I'm not a liar. Okay? So don't say the council, that's untrue, that's not truthful.
Do we have any other comments on agenda items only? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. I'm Destiny Multer, 7897 National Pike. So I wanted to bring this comment on item 37. It's an initiative to plant fruit trees and create green spaces, starting with Grant Park. The goal of this project is create, to create lasting positive impacts by introducing fruit-bearing trees to underserved communities. This initiative not only fosters environmental sustainability but brings a range of social, economic, and health benefits to residents. The key benefits is food security, offering free, accessible, nutritious options for the residents, community engagement, economic empowerment, if there's ever a surplus of fruit, we can sell it at the farmer market, farmers' market and put those proceeds back into the park. Creating green spaces enhances the environment, positively impacting mental health and overall quality of life. And I'm not sure if anybody's been paying attention, but last year we were in the red zone for air quality. Creating more green spaces, providing more trees takes us out of that risk factor. This project will be at no cost to the city. I will fundraise and I already have backing from several businesses throughout Union Town and 14 community members before going public without approval, of course. So myself and these community members and the businesses will maintain and plant these trees at no cost to the community. So I ask that City Council approve this and help us create a lasting legacy that will improve the health of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Destiny, this is something that we talked about years ago. This is something that, playing one of my goals, okay? Green spaces is very important and we have a lot of, I would like for all this light remediation that's going to happen or whatever, some of these empty spaces become green spaces. I would like that to happen. That's a goal that I would like for you guys to help me on and I'm excited. We've been waiting for this for a while, so it's going to be fun. We have a crew together that's going to take care of the land, so Joe won't have to pick up fruit or nothing like that, it won't get in the way of his duties. So it's got no responsibility to any staff or anything like that. We got the ball, we'll play and just, if you allow us to do it, it'd be great.
And I can also add, like, certainly there's a number of people that have been supporting the.
Very good. Any other comments on agenda items only?
I think the thing that really troubles me this evening about, about the proposed agenda item to replace, dismantle, remove the Parks and Rec Board is the message that it sends to citizen volunteers. I'm a pastor and part of how we function is through volunteers. And if I don't work with volunteers, I lose their trust and I lose their participation, I lose their sweat equity and, and the community loses out. And really, that's, that's what I'm afraid of, is that there are times in my church that I get very frustrated with volunteers and with folks who, who seem to be actively going in a different direction than what I'm going in. And yet it's the community as a whole that is what is really important. And again, you know, the, the idea that we have volunteers who want to be involved in our city, want to make our city better, like all of our, like all of our council people. I realize that you guys aren't in this for the big paycheck or the, you know, the accolades that you guys so rarely get. And at the same time, I know that, I've been here 10 years now and, and I've lived next to Bailey Park all of that time and lived next to Grant Street and lived, you know, and visited our other parks and, and they need help, they need volunteers. And if we get rid of one set of volunteers, you're going to have the same issues with the next set of volunteers because people are people and people are difficult. And yet, people are also people and they're wonderful and they're worth working with. And so I really encourage you to reconsider the idea of, of the nuclear option. Thank you.
Thank you. No worries.
Any other comments on agenda items? Jack, go ahead.
Jack Swesnick, 63 Montview Street. I have a question on agenda item number 41. Does the hourly rate include any fringe benefits or anything?
As, when you're talking about fringe benefits, can you be more clear?
Does it include a retirement plan, benefits, anything?
Could you provide your comments first and then we'll give you an answer?
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's a legitimate question before.
Okay, no problem. If you have any other comments, provide those first and then we'll give you an answer.
Okay, so I have another question and I don't know if that's permitted on, on agenda item 43. Mr. Witt, is that potentially a violation of the ERISA Act? And the reason I'm asking, not necessarily standing in opposition of it, but if a retirement is being collected, can we do that as a city? Has it been vetted?
So, and I'll answer that question, absolutely. Go ahead and ask. If you have any other items, you have questions.
I have just one more item, agenda item number 63. Obviously, we've had some discussion around that and there are many reasons why I feel that it should not be disbanded. The main one would simply be the optics of it, you know, as previously mentioned, so just a comment that I have on that and that's it.
Go ahead, Sharon. I think you have a question.
So, all of these positions, except for the part-time position in the city, they come with what you're calling fringe benefits, 401K, all the health benefits and, yes.
Okay, so an interim position would have that on top of the hourly rate?
The position that we have is, right now, the said person is an assistant clerk, city clerk. So right now what we're doing, we're in a process, I'm in a process, I've restructured the department. Being because of the, it's really hard to find somebody out there that has, and I'm going to call it expertise because it's what it is, to find somebody out there. So in the meantime, the move that we've made is we've, I've appointed with support of council, obviously, today, an interim city clerk. And at the same time, what I'm also doing is, is we're actively seeking city clerk, we're advertising on Indeed, trying to get out there and find it. And also, you know, which is also going to lead into some other decisions that we're trying to get into for next year as well, trying to add another layer of management. I think all the studies that we have, Jack, show that, that, that the city does need a city manager, even though that was voted down last month, which that is still not off the table. With this move, yeah, sure, there are pay increases, you're seeing pay increases on this.
Yeah, or.
What we have, what we have is, is that with these moves, we're able to save about This, I made some moves in a couple of different areas with support of council. We had moved the rental registration upstairs. That was, added up to be about 250 hours a year. We've, we've taken that back. And with the salary of the existing city clerk and making these moves and what we, the big thing, the big move that we've made tonight, that we'll make tonight, is that we have a part-time position that we're making a full-time position and it's going to have greater details of duty. And this, what this is going to do is going to alleviate with the maneuver that is being made, it's also going to spread the structure of the office out. We, we, I had also solicited applications for that position. We had a decent turnout. We went through and we picked what I feel is, is really what the city needs to come back to, is hiring people that live in, actually live in the city. And I, and we have so many different areas where we've got away from that, I'm not talking anything bad about that. I support the current situation, but future hires, I'm looking to recycle the money, you know? I think that is another good thing. So these new applicants that we have come in, they come in with a greater level of job ability, skill set. And again, you know, this is, working through this, this is, it's kind of uncharted and not that the city has not been in this position before, but it, you know, with the exit of the city clerk and still being able to retain her, and this isn't going to, this, this agreement does not take effect immediately. We don't, we don't look to proceed to use Ms. Marshall's consulting services for another, I would say, month and a half, two months.
Okay, so you, respectfully, you went to the, to the second part of the question. So just so we can get a solid yes or no, the hourly rate, any fringes are on top of that hourly, hourly rate for?
Correct.
Okay. And, and just as a further comment, you mentioned a city manager. As, as a member of the community, I could definitely get behind that.
Yeah, and I think, Jack, all, all of the studies that we've had done here recently through the, through the volunteers of different colleges, graduates, graduate students, you know, and that's what it points to. Plus you go back into, and this is something that Councilwoman Brown is big on, is the comprehensive plan and the master park plans. So this is stuff that, yeah, I mean, it's really, I know the optics of it, we want to talk about optics and, you know, things get voted down or things are on for a meeting and then they don't go nowhere. Just because some things get voted down, especially like the manager, doesn't mean that it's completely off the table, so that, that's, it just takes more planning. I know I got off on everything.
Yeah, and I'm just looking for some clarity on the ERISA Act. I don't want to see the.
And that's a good question. That is one of the things we evaluated, not so much ERISA because it's a municipal pension plan, it's not governed by ERISA itself.
Okay.
But there's similar rules for municipal pension.
I wasn't sure, public-private sector, if there was a difference.
Right, yeah, there's a little bit of distinction there. The rules are still similar, which as Councilwoman Billy alluded to, that's one of the reasons why that has to be structured in such a way that it doesn't violate any of those rules with a delayed start date, things like that, so there's just sufficient period of time.
Would that mean potentially that it wouldn't be a W-2, it would be something else like a 1099?
Correct. I mean, that's, that's what we have to evaluate to make sure that it falls within.
Okay, but we're vetting that? No. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Jack. Any other comments on agenda items only? Ms. Trout?
My name is Kelly Trot. I'm a resident of the city and I'm currently serving on the Parks and Rec Board. And I wanted to comment on a few agenda items, starting with 63. I want to share a little about the board and request that you do not vote in favor to disband it. I just want to tell the community about us. We are comprised of five city resident volunteers and the board was just recently instated a few months ago. We held our first meeting in November and we are just starting to work through our processes and figure out how we operate. We have advertised our meetings to the public, everyone is invited. They are the third Sunday at 5:00 here at City Hall. We have been open and transparent, our meetings have made it, we now have a presence on the city's website and we created social media. So we've been, we stand ready to work with everyone on council and some examples of the duties and powers of the board, as stated in the ordinance approved by council, include assisting with planning and implementation of various recreational events and park improvements, monitoring the conditions of the parks and making recommendations to council, among other responsibilities. Having a citizen board such as this is a force multiplier for good that increases transparency, creates community involvement that can help us, help propel us to new heights and help nurture a more positive relationship between the community and city government. This board cares about our parks and community and would like to see all our city parks improved, which as a result, we hope will increase our community pride and the quality of life for our residents. To share some of the things we have been doing, we, we just started, but we are jumping in and working diligently on the farmers' market, an event that was widely received last year. And again, we've been working through the, the social media and, and those items. Some goals we have include establishing bylaws, advocating for proper maintenance for our parks, hosting events, raising funds, and writing grants. So with that said, again, we're still new and figuring out how things operate, but I'd like to comment on number 37. Thank you, Destiny, for bringing this. I, I want to thank you for bettering, wanting to better the community and offering to assist with the project. I mean, I don't want to speak for the board, but I certainly want to see more things like this in the community, but just as an example, I want to make council aware that, you know, as, as we're going through this, that, that our board was never made aware of this project and I don't want to speak for the board, but we don't know where the trees would be planted now, I learned now at Grant Street. And so if they're going into one of our city parks, just me personally as a board member, I would just want to know the site location, the number of trees, the species, and the long-term. and the long-term maintenance plans. Those are some of the things I think our board would discuss as community things move forward. We just wanna kinda talk about and make sure, it might be the case, I, as, starting with some of these Parks and Rec conversations, somebody's working on something, but doesn't know that the other person is working on it. And so, I just wanna kinda get, I think the board would be an asset to just getting all the park projects on the same page, so we know what's going on. That, that would be what I have to say. Additionally, the, to enter an agreement with one voice among community, item 57, our board talked about it, but, you know, we suggested that council explore it, we were excited to review the details of the agreement, but at this point, the agreement did not come back to the board, and we haven't reviewed it, and now it's being voted on. So, that's just an example, we would just like to maybe be part of the conversation in the event that there are things in the agreement that we would wanna look at. And then, lastly, item 49, safety bollards. I've, I've been here before, a few years ago, as a private citizen, odd on the board concerned that cars were driving through Bailey Park. I appreciate that council responded with chains, but I've noticed the chains are often damaged or down at times, and a while back, I requested bollards, one at the top of the hill and one near the concession stand, placed in a way that a vehicle or a stroller can get through without having to go around the chains into the grass. And so, if bollards are passed, I would wonder if we could consider putting more there, but now that we have a park board, maybe that can also come to the park recs, to the rec board, where the, the board members in the community can have input on bollards as well. So, again, our board's new, and we look forward to working together. I think we're gonna have a lot of positive change if, if you decide to keep us, and, you know, we wanna be part of, of making the community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Now, just talk about, let me just say, you're right, there was, there's a, you know, you have a park board, and then you have me. You're operating, you wanna operate as a separate entity, but we're supposed to be one entity. Okay, so that's my goal, I hope that's what we're gonna be, you know, so your park's a recreation, that's what you are. As far as the lease, there is nothing, that's why you didn't get one, because this was a conversation that nobody talked to me about, right? This was a conversation that the mayor had with you guys, and then it went on the agenda, and there's no lease. So, I'm tabling it only because there's no lease, because I have to operate properly. And in business, if you're a teacher, the student brings you a paper and it's incomplete, you hand it back, and you don't approve it. So, that's, I just wanna tell you, I'm not approving, not approving it, so I think it's a great idea, especially when I talked to you the other day, but the job's incomplete, right? So, you didn't get the documentation, 'cause I didn't give it to you, 'cause I didn't have it either, 'cause it's not drawn up, as far as I know, I'm not sure, is there one drawn up? Okay, see, didn't even get it, girl, see? When I get it, we'll look over it, and we'll go forward, okay? You see, there's a disconnect.
The, the lease is in the packet. It's in the resolution packet.
And when did I get the packet?
Today. It's attached to.
I got the packet today.
Did you have time to review?
Listen, this is the thing, and we had this discussion in back, it's, I think it's unfair to give somebody a packet, and you haven't even had a conversation with me prior to a meeting. I ask for respect to hear of these things as they go on, as they're happening. I don't, don't ever bring anything in my face the day before, the day of a meeting, I got this today, and, and expect me not to do homework, and think for myself, and vote accordingly to how I want to vote. That's how it's supposed to go. So, that's not, no, you gave it to me today. That's not right. It's not right, 'cause there's a lot of stuff on there I don't know anything about.
Do you wish to like to touch base on this action?
All the stuff we've, I don't know anything about.
We can wait until that.
We're having a meeting later, so, we're, we're, I'm gonna, we're gonna be meeting later, so we'll, we'll be all right, y'all, we'll talk later, after this meeting.
Any other comments on agenda items?
I just wanna mention a couple things I have on the agenda, 'cause I have to run to have our data truck outside, I have to run to Super Call with it, so. I'd just like to speak on items 48, 49, 50, and 51. 48 is to approve the purchase of some railing down on Iowa Street next to the post office. There's a portion of the road where there's, you could card a guard rail or old iron railing, and it's deteriorated and rusting and falling apart, and this is just the cost to buy the material for us to replace it. Number 49 is to purchase the 12 safety bollards. Those are designated for the Sheepskin Trail in multiple areas, and hopefully, we have some left over for the remaining part, portion of the trail. If the rec board and councilman, or, sorry, Councilwoman Angela decide they want some, I don't see an issue with us helping to get those installed wherever need be. And I know on the trail that it has been an issue with vehicles, and that's why this is on there, just to try to keep everybody safe. Number 50 is to approve the purchase of parts for the Beast, which is our grinding machine down on the compost site. This is just replacement teeth, it has approximately 250 teeth on it, and when the season kicks off, I think we change probably 50 of them a week, so we go through them a lot, and we just need to keep some in stock. And number 51 is to approve the payment to Green Acres Contracting. That was a guard rail installation that we installed on Jefferson Street Bridge. The city owns approximately eight to 10 bridges that I can think of, and a lot of them are in need of repair, brick projects aren't cheap, so the state goes around and inspects them, and they kind of dictate to us what we can do to help, to help provide safe, to help to make them safer for pedestrians across or cars across in the condition they're in. And that job was completed, and we were kinda under the knife to get it completed, otherwise Pendott was gonna take it on themselves to do us and charge us their costs. That's all I have, does anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll get it written on there once the weather breaks.
I know, I know, you guys are trying.
Yeah.
This is something that I brought my place along, I went down here the other day, and, my name is Jerry O'Brien, way out in town, and, you're, it's very easy to get a child, he's ahead of his home, like you're on that street before you go.
Yeah.
One other thing I'd like to bring up, of Jerry O'Brien in town, okay, this here is a painting that, down by the firehouse. I come through there the other day, waiting, I go to move through there, the car comes right through the roof, never ever thought. I think that light has to be functioning to make it work and be thoughtful.
Chief DeWitt, can you expand on that?
That's right, the place is big, being, what do we call it, engineering studies at this point, to figure out what the actual cost is gonna be, I believe, is pending. The point to, we're waiting for an engineering, assuming we have to send enough bids, once we get an engineering study back, saying exactly what that light's gonna cost to fix. It's gonna be an absorbed amount, which is gonna require a closed bid, I assume, which is gonna be open in account, I mean, later on. Once that step is taken, that light will be fixed, it's just in an engineering study point, we're literally, I sent an email a day or two, a week ago, and it's waiting for a reply back from them. We got an email this morning for a follow-up, asking them for a status on that. So, we're waiting for a moment, follow-up, and we'll come back, and hopefully, this engineering stuff will come back, we'll know the actual, what needs to be fixed, what needs to be fixed, that one. Hey, understand your frustration, I dropped it by all the time, too, but I'm definitely about to help him.
Um, with the railway stop sign, with the concrete base sitting in the middle of the road.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments on agenda items? Joe, go ahead.
My name's Joe Chuhan, I live at 46 Pershing Avenue. I was just wondering how the abolishing of the part-time clerk position in the office of the council finance got on there. When I spoke to all three of the other council members, and they didn't even know this was gonna happen, and they didn't even know about the letter that that part-time clerk got, that she was gonna be terminated. So, I was wondering how this got on the agenda, without these three other council members knowing about it.
So, you know just as well as I do, Mr. Chuhan, former councilman, that you need to, you need a proposal, you need somebody to second, okay? We did not terminate anybody, we just decided not to, we decided to go make the position full-time. The position has expanded job duties, and also, was also available to be applied for by, by the said person as well, so. I, and I don't have anything good that, that's gonna make you feel better about it, okay? This is, it's the, and when we get into talking about personnel matters, you know just as well as I do, you gotta be very careful about what exactly you say. So, what I can say is, is that the city, after today, depending on how the vote goes, has decided to expand the roles into a full-time position with greater job duties. With the exit of the, of the city clerk, and the maneuver in adjusting the restructure of the office, that position had to become full-time, and is also available for the person that held the part-time position. Council has, had done interviews, and has a recommendation on the meeting tonight for that position, and, and I urge council to support that, those decisions. At the same time, I, I respect, I respect your opinion as well. Just in the very beginning of this last year, when this all come about, I was very upfront about what qualif, what, what qualities of the candidate would need to qualify for the position, and I also understand how you're taking it personal.
Well, you're losing Kim, and now you're losing a part-time person, and you're only...
We're gaining a full-time position. So, actually, what we're doing is, is we're taking a part-time position, and we're adding it on, it's like getting two people out of one.
You're losing, you're losing a full-time position and a part-time person, you're only, and you're only replacing them with a full-time position.
And we're also saving $30,000 with the move, so I don't think anybody in the room could disagree. And again, I'd like to say that, again, I'd like to say, I understand how you're taking it personal.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items only? Mr. Blackburn, you patiently waited.
Yes, sir, I got, um...
Thank you.
Some reading materials, so I'm gonna follow along with one item.
It's propaganda.
Propaganda?
Propaganda.
It's literally the third-class city code statutes, and...
Nice shirt you got there.
I, I don't care about your opinions on my friend's business. All right, so to get started, I got seven items I wanna speak on, so let's go, numerical order sounds good. So, item 40 and 39, how can you fill a position you just created? You haven't even created it, and you're filling it, that's just, doesn't make sense to me. You can answer these later if you'd like, if not, you don't have to. 41, to appoint Shannon Wood as interim clerk. Why are we going to pay the interim clerk what amounts to about $73,000 a year, plus fringe benefits? So, now we have a $90,000 a year, maybe more clerk position, when the current clerk isn't making that? I don't think you are, no offense, or, you know, I believe it was less than that last time I checked the budget. So, we're giving increases, salary increases, even though that has to be, to raise to pay, it has to be done by an ordinance. You can't just hire somebody at a higher rate than what's already approved by the ordinance. So, moving on to 43, who proposed that, item 43? I already know the answer.
That was a proposal by myself.
Yes, it was. So, did anybody else second it?
Yes, I was seconded.
Okay. Did you guys know about it?
No.
No, so the, half the council, if not more, doesn't even know what's going on, as they've said about several other items. I find this concerning, I don't know what's so different about these members, I mean, I can visually look at them and see what's different. I don't know if the past behavior of this council plays any, like, towards that, but I find it very concerning, the kind of abrasive relationship that's developed immediately from them taking office. You know, I, I think they're good-hearted people, I may have my disagreements with them, but they are members of this community, and in my interactions with them, they do care. So, I, I don't understand why they get so much feedback or pushback. But I do wanna go ahead and further enumerate on item 43, so I passed out something you guys can follow along, and I, several members of the oddens got one. So, this has to deal with a contract to enter into with Ms. Marshall for consulting services on an as-needed basis. Well, this has several problems. One, because currently, until the 11th, she is an employee of the city, and under Section 1103 of the Ethics Act, something she should be familiar with, and the former mayor should be familiar with, 'cause they both were busted and found guilty of violating the specific statute, just a different enumerated offense under it. That's weird, you blow me a kiss, but you can have one back, but appropriate behavior from like a 900-year-old man. But anyways, I'll go ahead and read it. So, "No public official or public employee, or his spouse or child, or any business in which the person or his spouse or child is associated, shall enter into any contract valued at $500 or more with the governmental body with which the public official or public employee is associated, or any subcontract valued at $500 or more." $33 an hour, you guys haven't listened, any number of hours, which is bizarre, so you can read that statute to see that they're not allowed to do that, there, there, this has to be listed, it wasn't listed. What is she gonna be doing? We don't know. What services are needed? We don't know, just as needed. So, she's the immediate best person if we need consulting services for design work, for marketing, for a radio ad? What are we, what are we doing here? We need to have clear and defined contracts that we're entering into, and that's actually enumerated by law. But let me go over the penalties for violating 1103-F, because they're more severe than the ones you face, sir. So, the penalties for any person who violates provisions of Section 1103-D through J, they commit a misdemeanor and shall upon conviction be sentenced to pay a fine of not more than $1,000 or two, imprisonment of not more than one year. So, let's go on to the third-class city code. Contracts or purchases in excess of $18,500, well, because it's a city employee, it's only $500 limit. It says, "Except as provided in Section 11901.4, all contracts or purchases in excess of the base amount, subject to adjustment under 11903.1, shall be subject to advertising competitive, competitive bidding as provided by this chapter." I don't believe it was, I didn't hear anything about it, you guys never even heard about it, so how was it advertised? You guys didn't vote to advertise the position? So, that's bizarre. Let's go ahead and move on to third-class city code, 11901.3, determining amounts of contracts. This is an as-needed contract, it's open-ended, it's gonna be piecemealed together. And the statute says, "The amount of the contract shall be the entire amount, which the city pays to the successful bidder, or the successful bidders assigns, in order to obtain the services, or property, or both, and shall not be construed to mean any amount which is paid to acquire title or to receive any other particular benefit, or benefits of the whole bargain." So, we don't have the whole agreement, we don't know how many hours they haven't listed, none of that, just as needed. How many hours? Five hours? 100 hours? Who knows? It's as needed. Okay, and so, this kinda skategoats around the lowest responsible bidder requirement, because we don't know what they're bidding on, so how can you be a responsible bid, responsible bidder, if you have no clue what consult, consultation services you're gonna be providing? So, whenever you move on to, from the 11901 section to Section 11902, evasion of advertising requirements. No elected or appointed official or officials in any city shall evade the provisions of this chapter requiring advertising for bids by purchasing or contracting for services and personal property piecemeal. requiring advertising for bids by purchasing or contracting for services and personal property piecemeal. What that means is like a puzzle, a little bit at a time. When you're hiring someone on an as-needed basis per hour, that's piecemeal per hour. You're paying them per hour. You're not being, you're not being clear, as, as we've seen. We don't know how much his contract is worth, or what it's for, or anything. So they can't do this, and you go on and you read, it says, this paragraph. Paragraph one is intended to make it unlawful for the practice of invading advertising requirements by making a series of purchases or contracts. So you're going to keep hiring her on an as-needed basis? That sounds like a series of purchases and contracts.
There, why don't you shut him up?
Because it's my constitutional right. Why don't you go to chime, you commie?
Okay, and.
Hey, hey, that's my constitutional right under Miller v. California.
Just stop.
No.
Personal attacks.
I'm not doing personal attacks. I'm reading the statute. If you don't like it, you can have your chief remove me and violate my civil rights. I'm all for that. Mr. Sansone is love, loves to sue you guys. Ask Mr. Witt. He's a part of the current lawsuit for telling me that the city needs to approve my social media comments. So let's get back to what I was talking about, and let me have my First Amendment right. No, I'll do what I want. Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
He called him out his name, so that's, that was, he said, he called him out his name. Let's be fair.
He's interrupting me. I'm allowed to do this. I'm, this is political speech under Miller v. California. I'm a better law enforcement and I know the law better than you. You know it and you know it. So you're going to stop interrupting me, allowing me my First Amendment rights to speak on public agenda item matters. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for bringing up the fact that he has interrupted me. He's exhibited bizarre behavior like blowing kisses and stuff. Now he's doing like signs like, this is crazy. This is crazy behavior, and it shows the corruption.
You did do it. You did do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Not required. I, I, I was, I mean, so I was interrupted, so. Let me, let me, I should restart all my comments, but I'll continue, because this has gone on long enough. So let's go ahead and move to the, to the ultimate conclusion of what will happen if you guys go forward with appointing someone in violation of 1103-F. This, the following shall apply to an individual holding an elective city office. The individual must be removed from office in accordance with the Constitution of Pennsylvania as follows. Three, upon conviction of misdemeanor behavior in office or of any infamous crime. And it goes on to further enumerate this set, chapter and other provisions of law requiring a forfeiture of office upon the conviction of a crime shall apply only if the court determines that the conviction is for misbehavior in office or for an infamous crime. You guys are skating the line by telling me to stop. So, but you are going to break the law if you vote to appoint her to a contract that I clearly laid out does not meet law, several statutes. But I'm not done. I have other items I'd like to speak on. So item number forty-six and forty-seven, what happened to the audit for year 2022? Are we just three years behind? And also, what happened to Cypher and Cypher? Why did we return back to Thor and Wolf? That's bizarre. We're switching auditors just for one specific person? Again, it seems like we're targeting people. And agenda item sixty-four, here we go again, accepting yet another resignation of a code enforcement officer. I got a question, why, you know, is it an empty and meaningless position that serves to highlight the corruption and favoritism rampant in our community? You can look no further than Vanessa's hair studio continuously ignores a no-parking sign in the yellow painted curb, which by state law you're not allowed to park next to. Every day she's parked there, and I know there was a woman recently that she had an infraction wrote, but it's like, how come certain people can violate it every day? So it makes me wonder, is that the struggles that's leading to our officers quitting and resigning? Because maybe they are trying to do the right thing and they're just encountering maybe the same or similar pushback and feedback that our council members are encountering? So I'm just, I'm curious on, on why we're having such a high turnover rate with that position that seems to serve, you know, this community for what would appear to be the better of our interest. But you guys can address those as needed or not, but I do want to thank you and have a good one.
Any other comments on agenda items only? Someone wants to follow that?
I would like for, I would like for Mr. Billy to address the resignation, whoever, to address the resignation of this code enforcement officer. Because I don't know. I would like, somebody.
Wayne, I can address that, Angela. Wayne called me this week and just told me that he is going to another job and thank you for your time. There was no other conversation, but he personally called back.
So there wasn't any grievances?
Not at all, not at all.
Okay, okay.
None to my knowledge.
So I stay in, okay.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, with, with respect to agenda item forty-three, that, that's the agenda item for the consultation agreement. For, for council is education on that, so. The section 1103 of the State Ethics Act, which Mr. Blackburn referenced, is precisely one of the reasons why that contract can't be signed immediately. There has to be a mandatory delay period in place, so it does not violate that provision. Section, the sections of the third-class city code with respect to contracts normally would be applicable to contracts including this, but there's also an exception. It's referenced in that language and it's further in the third-class city code that excludes personal and professional contracts for personal and professional services from these public bidding requirements. So that would not be subject to that same requirement then to be publicly bid out of that. I just wanted to make sure you guys had that information, so you could vote accordingly.
So, I mean, I just would like to, I don't, I don't know if I can say this now at this point in time, but listen to what you're saying. Are we allowed to just table that to prevent us from any future issues? Can we table it since we have to wait for a later date anyway? We can't just table that item, or does it have to be going on today? Why can't we just wait that period? And then, so to, to exclude any confusions or any potential lawsuits already, can we just wait for that item?
There's no, there's no prohibition against table, so.
And I mean, because you said we have to wait a certain amount of time before you can even implement this anyway. So for the public's sake, just let table so they, you know, until it's time?
That's the decision of council.
I'm just, that's my stance, because I'm just hearing about it. I'm, 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 I'm going to be educated, so that's why. Okay. I just don't want any issues down the line, that's all.
Does the council have any questions for me on that?
No.
Any other comments on agenda items? Frank?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to be brief. My name is Franklin Lacava. I live in Union Town up on Braddock Avenue. I'm here tonight because there's nothing good on TV. I wanted to comment on items number thirty-seven and sixty-three. I think this is a great idea. Planting fruit trees, possibly trees that aid game in the city, birds. I've thought this for many years. At one time, I was the head of the county conservation district. And there was a very active city tree committee. I don't know if you've ever heard of that. It was called the Shade Tree Commission, or Committee, I'm not sure. But it's gone by the wayside and maybe could be something we could revive. I, I'm very encouraged tonight for the public input here. People care. And I recently attended the Parks and Recs Board meeting. I think they're the third Sunday at City Hall. Kelly Trot was there and of course Crystal. I was sort of encouraged to see the editor of the Union Town paper. So there's really some energy coming from the city. And I'm not a member of the committee, but I thought that I could offer my experience over the years, so people don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think that when people attend and you have input like that, you have transparency. And many things in political deliberations work through committees. Congress, for example, you have the committee system. You know, it's just not one congressman or one senator running things. I was very disappointed that Angela, you weren't there. I mean, this is your committee. And I think that it's very important for you to attend, because then there won't be misunderstandings. No one's trying to usurp your authority. I think this is just people coming up with ideas, sharing experiences. I'm sure you have some plans. No one seemed to have an evil agenda, you know? But I think if you were to attend those meetings, there wouldn't be a disconnect. So you wouldn't have to discourage, you know, people who want to volunteer and do something good for the public. That would just be my comment.
Oh, I just want to, oh, so the reason why I don't attend the meetings on a Sunday is because I'm a pastor and Sundays belong to me, okay? And my God, okay? So we talk, I talk to Kelly, me and Kelly talk, there is a correspondence between us. So it's not that, the disconnect is not because of lack of communication. I'm not an unreasonable woman. I'm not a mean woman. So if I say something, I say it for a reason. So the, there's, the disconnect that we have is when I say something, we'll do a case in point, not to sit me out. Please don't feel I'm like trying to sit me out. We talked about the school. They want to make the sign for Farmers Market.
Right.
I, they asked me about it. I said, go ahead, have them do it.
Sure.
Well, I think we should probably talk to council. I think we should, no, you don't, we don't have to do all that. I'm telling you, go ahead, go do it. You see what I'm saying? So that's, it's just, that's the issue. So if I say, let's go do it, just have it done. You know, everything doesn't have to go and be for a vote, because first of all, it's $500, it's no cost to us, it's pointless. Just do it. You know what I mean? You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, it is what it is. So that's, there's a communication issue. And then like, like Ms. Trout said, when they perform, no one gave them like a specific, their bylaws and things like that.
Well, councilwoman, this, this would be easily remedied if we could just all.
Well, stable, it's not even, here's a.
No, if we could all meet on the same day.
That's what, well, we talked about it and I told her.
If it violates your commitments and you're a pastor, you need to give us your blessing.
So what I said to Ms. Trout, don't change, if you have something good and you have a whole, how many board members are over there? You have five. So you have five people who have come in agreement. And when we had the conversation, I told you, if it's going to be a problem for you guys, I don't want you to change your flow for just one person that can't make it. I'll call in or, that's what we discussed, right? But if you're willing, I would love to have them after the council meetings, like what we're doing now, like we're having one tonight after the council meeting. I would love for you guys, if you can, I would hope so. But if not, we'll figure it out, but I don't feel you guys should stop what Jen's doing for, because I'm not available on a Sunday night. You see what I'm saying? I can very well talk to you over the phone, like we've been doing. I can very well email you guys like we've been doing, right? We've been corresponding back and forth. I'm not going to stop you. I don't want to slow you down, is what I'm saying, and that's what I meant by that.
No, I think this is just.
There's other ways of communication. Is what I'm saying to you, is me being physically present, there's other ways of communication.
Right, I can understand your, your commitments and your spirituality.
Being upset, that, there's no need for you to be disappointed in me because I'm serving my God. So Sundays I'm not available. So that's why I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, but see, there's.
And that was, it was expressed. They, they knew about it. They, they knew about it.
See, there's better things on TV Sunday night, and I, I wouldn't mind changing, you know, the date. And I think if you conferred with the other committee members, if that's all it is, that it's just a temporal disconnect, that could easily be resolved. But to go to the extreme of wanting to disband the committee and send, you know, people who are impassioned and willing to work, my gosh.
I, listen, I understand what you guys are saying.
Yeah.
I'm all for having a board.
Sure.
So you guys, like, you're, you're, you're like preaching to the choir. I'm in agreement with how, I don't have a problem with having a board. I have a problem with the board telling me that I have like, really, they can go to another council member and say they can override my decisions. So there's things you guys are commenting on that you aren't even aware of, because conversations I have with board members are private.
Councilwoman Brown, if you were there, that wouldn't happen. So could we put our heads together maybe after the meeting?
We don't have to put our heads together. We have already put our heads together. We have a meeting this evening. That's what I'm saying. The public, we're good. The board, we're, no, it's not. It's, yeah, it's for us, so we're good. We're good. Yeah, we're good.
Well.
Because when they were handed the, the board, no, there was no clear thing. It was.
Okay.
Parliament. Now I'm here, and what everybody has to understand, there's a master plan for the city. That was developed in 2007. It was developed in 2007. And I came here, the plan is beautiful.
Yes.
I want to implement the plan. And I feel the disconnect that I had, I didn't tell them my vision and what my plans. So I'm going to give them that plan so they can see it.
With all due respect.
And I understand direction where I want to go.
Mr. Mayor, I, I've made my statement, and I hope this can be resolved.
Thank you, Frank. Always appreciate your comments. Any other comments on agenda items only? If not, we'll get on to the, the meeting. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town. To receive the report of the treasurer for the month of February 2024, be in the same as hereby received and filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the February 1st, 2024 regular council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town. Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for February 2024 invoices. The general fund, $179,173. Sewer fund, $146,536.49. Recreation, $1,663.97. Recycling, $1,982.84. Highway, $49,512.73. Off-street, $5,877.55. Library, $1,450.41. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to refund the following sewage customer after selling the house. Automatic compayment continued to be forwarded to the sewage office for processing on 37 Marry Street in the amount of $99. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Before I take this vote tonight, I just would like to publicly notify everyone that the city is going to start water shut-offs. All right, so folks that are behind on these sewage bills that we've been giving the grace period on, that time is up. And so those you'll be starting to see roll out here, out of, out of our office. And this is, yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Also, real quick, the six-month grace period on the garbage contract, where the grace period of where we were going to decide on who was going to start the process of, of collecting delinquencies. So that, that, that window is up as well. So the folks that are delinquent on the garbage bills, you will also start to see those letters come through as well.
Yes, Mr. Billy, I was made aware that the garbage company is going to start posting and they're going to have someone posting those physically on, on the doors of the properties.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So just, so the city knows that, that those processes are, are starting to take effect. This current garbage contract is up, I believe, in '25, and members of council, not all of council, but members of council are actively devising a plan that the city can take back over the garbage. This is something that is in the infancy. So even talking about it is, even just mentioning it, it's premature. But this is the direction that we need to go, and this is something. that we need to go, and this is something that the mayor and I, uh, and also Council Winfrey have discussed, uh, at hand. So this is something that we're gonna be looking to move forward with as well. Just to let everyone know.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to adopt a bill number seventeen seventy-six, proposed ordinance number seventeen fifty-six, and ordinance of the City of Uniontown, Bayett County, Pennsylvania, establishing rules and regulations for city parks and public places, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and providing an effective date. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes. If I'm gonna speak to the board, this is gonna help keep our parks safe and keep vagrants and people off our parks, so.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the replacement of lights at Bailey Park by Bowers Electrical in the amount of three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, and to approve the inspection for replacement of any faulty lights at Grand Street Park. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the proposal from Destiny Mulcher of Destiny Tealing Oasis to raise funds for planting approved-bearing trees on city property. Destiny Tealing Oasis will seek financial support from local businesses and partner with local organizations and volunteers for the planting and sustainability of the project.
So just real quick, before we take a vote, uh, my, my question to Destiny, um, when we're collecting donations or any monetary support for the city, very important that the city, um, is fully aware of what is collected, uh, the type of how we're collecting. You know, just so we, we have this going in the right direction, uh, and speaking with Councilwoman Brown as well, is it, is it correct to, to understand that we not, will not be taking cash?
No. Correct. No, we will transparently what, what we are collecting, how much I can...
So, I mean, this is something that Councilwoman had, had expressed, but I, I feel that it's, anytime that we get involved in a third-party company, uh, organization, uh, that is raising money on behalf of, uh, you know, a government entity, is, it, it has to be spelled out and has to have public trust as well. I, I, I believe in the cause. I just wanna be really, you know, uh, clear that, um, how we collect donations and the process of what we, how we go through and do this is the, it's very important for my office as well. But, yeah, you know what, uh, the office of, of the mayor and Council of Finances is open, so if there's any questions or any concerns, like, please come through and we'll, we'll go ahead and talk. And thank you.
I have no issues.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
The mayor, he just briefly, so he won't be... Can we wait? Would we like to wait? We're... Let's give Bill a few minutes here. We're, we're already an hour and twenty-five minutes into here. Anybody need a water? Anybody need a water?
No, thank you.
Thanks, G. No, I'm good, thank you. No, no, you're good, you're good. We're waiting. Uh, it's, it's, it's your vote, and quickly, some of that's these, uh, resolutions, if you wanna take.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve abolishing the part-time clerk position in the Office of Accounts and Finance. Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
I am not gonna vote because I, I want to set tongue for me, but if I'm not aware of anything or talked to about anything beforehand, where I can't make my own assessments, I'm just gonna not vote, either way. Yes. Well, I'm not necessarily saying yes or no, I don't wanna just be involved. How do you not just be involved with it at all? Because I don't know anything else.
So, with, with respect to the third-class city code, municipal government in general, there's a duty of every public official to vote in the affirmative or in the negative for any question that's presented to them. There is the ability to abstain, generally have to provide the basis for abstention, and it has to generally be for legally recognized reasons, typically like a quantum of interest.
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve creating a full-time clerk two position in the Office of Accounts and Finance with a starting salary of fifteen fifty per hour. The position will provide full benefits after the ninety-day probationary period is successfully completed. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
This is another thing where we are creating it and then we're voting for a person already. So I feel like this is something that we should have talked about beforehand, or we already told somebody to hire him, so, but it's already been done, so, yes, I guess.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I second what she said, and I'm voting no.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to hire Jamie Chip as clerk two in the Office of Accounts and Finance at a starting salary of fifteen fifty per hour effective March eleventh, twenty twenty four. There will be a ninety-day probationary period with the full benefits upon successful completion of probation. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to appoint Shannon Wood as interim city clerk at thirty-five eighteen per hour effective March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve a pay rate adjustment for Desiree Walsh, clerk, clerk four at twenty-four dollars per hour effective March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
I, I will note, one, one change we will require of this one is that we can make condition upon approval by the union, as this is a collective bargaining position. Thank you. What is the union that currently stands as an ass?
Ass me.
Uh, with, with any union position comes union dues, and anytime a pay wage goes up, also do the use, the dues owed to the union. So I urge that the union sit down and negotiate this in good faith.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter agreement with Kimberly Marshall for consulting services on an as-needed basis at thirty-three dollars per hour. Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize payment of compensated absences to Kimberly Marshall as follows: thirty-seven and a half sick days, fifteen vacation days, for a total of three hundred and forty-one point two-five hours, plus two months of healthcare buyout at eight thirty-three, thirty-three, for a total of twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Robert Smith, crew chief, from the Street Department effective April twelfth, twenty twenty four, twelve o'clock noon. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the twenty-twenty-one City of Uniontown Audit Report of McCorrel Wolf CPA. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Uh, just to add, the, these audit reports are public information, always. And just as I discussed a few months ago, uh, in preparation for the release of the, this year's report, uh, there, there are flags. Uh, and also, there is a recommendation that was also submitted that, that we will follow. Some of the areas, uh, of attention were in the treasurer's office, those, uh, those areas of issue were quickly, um, you know, we, we had quickly developed new controls on those procedures. Um, just to touch base, we implemented a deputy treasurer, uh, which was able to alleviate the issues that we were having on that audit report. The whole purpose of all of these is, is when you get flagged, of course, it's not to duplicate that same error and learn. Um, I, my opinion of, of what had happened is, you know, there were three continuous years where we were not able to do our general audit, uh, and that was because of a special audit that Cypher and Cypher was doing that was targeting those funds and trying to get those funds back. So, McCorrel Wolf is the, is the firm that we, uh, do business with as the third-party agent. By no means are they easy. Their, their, uh, their test on the procedures are intense and, and, and they're difficult in the city. Good information. Take a look through it. I know some of you in the audience will already be taking a look at it. Yes.
So can I ask a question? Is there any new, just briefly, is there, you said this is because of the treasurer and the debacle? Were there any new findings or anything?
So, uh, the findings we have were, were controls that were, uh, on bank, bank stank and reconciliations. Uh, that was, uh, which caused the end numbers to not be accurate. Definitely not what you wanna see happen. And, and my opinion to see how, how it's gone since we've quickly been running through this is that there was a pattern of the deficiencies. And because we were not able to do these audits right away, and we, we were basically running through them one after another to get caught back up on schedule, we're, I'm seeing the same, the same issues. So where I'm really gonna be able to tell is when we start ripping into this twenty-twenty-three agreement to do the twenty-twenty-two audit for people that don't understand that. Uh, so that's where we're at with that, and we, I'm telling you, we are quickly moving through this. This is something that when we meet with the audit committee, I try to put together a committee that is not gonna be a conflict in the sunshine. Of course, not, no decisions are made in this. It's, it's basically to bring you up to speed. I'd love to bring you in on that whenever we do that. You know, I, I would love to, it's something I would like to have a lot of people on so they understand, and this is something that will help you further down the road understanding more of the finances. Unfortunately, we did have, we did get flagged. The important thing is, is how, how, what steps we make to correct those and then we don't, we don't continue.
I would, I would love that, I would definitely hope.
I thought we did, we just, we were just accepting the, the audit report.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the terms of engagement with the former LLC, Certified Public Accountants with the City of Uniontown, to audit the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Uniontown as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for an estimated fee of between thirty-six to forty-six thousand dollars.
And I wanna add this too, before we take this vote. There's no saying that there wasn't more money taken, okay? We didn't start putting severe controls on the treasurer's department until after the forensic audit came out. So there's a chance that there was more money taken. Now, here's the flip side of it. The city spent upwards of almost three hundred thousand dollars to get back a hundred and seventy. You said, you think that we're gonna, we're gonna go through with that? No. What that is, is what spend another hundred, a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars to get forty-five thousand dollars remaining on the term? I think the people that vote people in have to do a better job of it, it voting these people. I, I can't tell you that how disappointing I was when I gave that audit report to certain people and they decided to spend.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of railing from All Around Fence Company for replacement fence on Iowa Street at a cost of two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of twelve safety ballers from Home Depot for the sheepskin trail at a cost of two thousand two hundred dollars and fifty-six cents. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve purchase of teeth riker parts for the beast used at the Compaes site from Stevenson Equipment at a cost of four thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Mr. Thomas, is this a shared expense, do you know, between South Union and the city?
Um, I was never notified about this.
It is.
So you don't know what equipment you need in your department? Have you been down to your department?
I have. Uh, if the director would be a little bit more transparent, I would have known what is needed.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve application and certificate for payment from Green Acres Contracting Company in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for installation of guide rails on Jefferson Street Bridge. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Just a quick, we're on number forty-nine and one hundred and forty-nine. So that the city is exempt from sales tax, so if there's a way for them to remove that sales tax from that item?
Which one is it?
Um, it's that home EVO, I think, it's the forty-nine.
They, they didn't have a way, I did address that, uh, they didn't have a way to take it out of their system. So that was my mistake that I added that in, in their computer, they couldn't take it off. But the quote is without.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to reappoint David Boyd to the Civil Service Board for a four-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify the purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Black Ford Interceptor S U V from Laurel Auto Group for use in the Police Department at a cost of thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
And, and we will note for the minutes that that is a CoStarz contract, so it's included in the CoStarz vendor number and the CoStarz contract number in the proposal that was received, so it's exempt from the public bidding.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval for upbidding of twenty-twenty-three Ford Interceptor Police Vehicle from East Coast Emergency Lighting for ten thousand eight hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to ratify approval for decals for police vehicle from Graphics Shop in the amount of nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the purchase of up to five thousand dollars in ammunition for the Police Department from Park Hill Office Store. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement between the City of Uniontown and One Voice, One Community for property lease of Cole Lake Run Park.
I would like to move to table this until it's complete and we have a lease in my face to see and, you know, this needs to be just completed, so I would like to table it for now. So we can come together to some type of agreement. Cause I, I don't know what's going on and I know there was a lease agreement, y'all say, I will see it. It's here, I just got it, so I would like to table it.
Do I have a second for tabling?
Yes.
This'll be about two tables, this resolution. Mr. Billy?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no.
This, this to table?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
No.
Motion to table passed. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to enter into an agreement with the City of Uniontown and the Uniontown Sons of Italy Giuseppe Mazini Lodge Two Thirty-One for the purpose of the Uniontown Sons of Italy to host an event, the Italian Festival in the City of Uniontown on Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, from eleven A M. to ten P M. And Sunday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-four, from eleven A M. to six P M. For a one-time payment to the City of Uniontown of five thousand dollars. Mr. Billy?
Uh, just as last year, uh, really the only comment that I have is for any alcoholic beverages to be designated in the nine-one-one parking lot. I, I, I don't like, I would not like to see the cells of any type of alcohol or any open container throughout the streets. I'd like to keep that in the designated area. Other than that, the, the Italian Festival, uh, wa- was a hit. Looking forward to building on it. Yeah. Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to grant approval to Brenda Stefanovich, owner of Bath Signs with the Veteran Banner Program. Bath Signs will handle all logistics, including the design, production, and installation of the banner. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the use of the decorative flag poles on Main Street to hang flags in memory of Emily Nicole Wilson Be Kind to Others Day in the City of Uniontown from April first, twenty twenty-four, through May first, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state's rights of way. The City of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to regional or local functions or charitable affairs. And this was for the Fayette County Community Action, um, Empty Bowls Event from March eighth to April eighth. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
This is a great event. This is held every single year, uh, Empty Bowls. My wife is the coordinator of this. Uh, I'm, I'm going to have to stay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation is the agency charged with granting permits to allow the placement of signs or banners within state rights of way. The City of Uniontown wishes to allow banners or signs relative to regional or local functions or charitable affairs. This is for City Mission Livingstone, uh, five K race. And that ends August seventeenth, eight A M. to twelve noon. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve disbanding the Parks and Recreation Board.
We decided not to even?
No vote at all?
No.
So procedurally, that doesn't warrant a motion to table because the council member that initially submitted a motion.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Wayne Brown as Code Enforcement Officer from the City of Uniontown effective March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
If we could, could we, could we get an advertisement out for that position right away? Through Indeed? See if we can do that.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve for P A. State Inspection as well as Comprehensive Maintenance and Service to Fire Engine Number Three at Burnt Sports Garage at a cost of up to nine hundred dollars. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Uh, monthly reports, um, Director of the Redevelopment Authority.
All right, let's rock and roll. So I did not print out the quick glance sheet this month. It is not changed. The final modifications were made. I will point out that the C D B G status meetings will be a standing monthly meeting. But now that we've gotten the C D B G program to a more organized kind of established program, we, we really won't be needing those monthly meetings. The monthly meeting will be this meeting. We can keep you updated, but the meeting will stand and anyone that wants to talk with me or meet with me, there'll be about a thirty-minute period where I will make myself available, uh, once a month to discuss any of the projects on the C D B G program. So the next meeting would be March twenty-second, recurring at ten A M. Next year's application will go in, in October, so we'll start planning our first hearings for around three hundred thousand dollars to use towards community development projects in May of twenty twenty-four. The competitive application that was discussed to be submitted in the twenty-twenty-four period, we do still hope to be able to submit it. However, there's a survey that's required. Uh, the particular sewer line, um, replacement was through, um, past Persian Court and all that complex and the houses served will need surveyed to determine low to moderate income eligibility. If that proves eligible, we'll move forward with an application with the resolution from, from City Council. The, uh, the updates on the programs, Lemon Street Playground is near complete. The Pavilion is underway. And, um, when that is finished, we will, um, schedule something there to kind of open the park and, um, everyone will be invited. The other activity that's ongoing on the C D B G program is demolition projects. Um, unfortunately, with federal funds, it takes time to demolish a building. So we are to that point. We are ready within the next few weeks to bid the projects out. We'll bid them out in, uh, bulk of four demo, uh, four demolitions. And, um, each contractor can bid on the individuals, but hopefully that'll make it a little bit more cost-effective, kind of putting it together. So we're working through that. The expiring funds that we recently modified are under review by the state. Uh, so far, so good. That's Calvary United Methodist Playground, Grant Street A D A Restrooms and Pavilion, State Theater External Rehabilitation, and One Voice, One Community Tutoring Program. So those are, uh, I hope in the next month going to be approved and we can start those projects. Usually projects are staggered, but so we're in it to win it. We're going to do four all in the same year. So let's go. The Engineering Services Agreement, um, we will have our Sewage Transportation Meeting. Um, that's a standing meeting with the engineer, just to be sure that if there's anything that needs discussed, um, related to that application, but we hold, we hold it, so it's March fifteenth. And, uh, the most exciting thing on the agenda tonight, um, so the home application that was submitted for existing owner occupied housing rehabilitation, we received the award today. Uh, they sent it over to the mayor and myself. I've shared it out. Um, or well, I haven't pushed out anybody. I wanted to surprise everybody else. So, um, it's here. Uh, we initially submitted seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that was the most you could ask for, so I went big. And they come back to me with four hundred thousand dollars for the housing rehabilitation. We'll have twenty-four thousand dollars of that towards the actual administration of the program. And I want to mo- uh, welcome Samantha Mayfield, she's in the audience. Sam is hit the ground running. I think it's going to be great. She, I feel like she's been here a month. It's just her second week. I loaded her up and we're ready to go. And one other thing she'll be working on is the fair funds, which we hope to hear back. And she's packaging the U S D A applications. So if there is anyone that is in need of housing rehabilitation or has questions on any process with housing, reach out to our office. You can go on our webpage at uniontownredevelopment.com, uh, click around, you'll find it. There's a couple, um, there's plenty of things on there you can take a look at. We are in the process of selling two properties and also developing a property marketing for adjacent landowners, which will be a bulk marketing of the properties that we have that are cleared and ready to go. And, uh, Story Square Concert Series is kicked off, so our planning went out today. The Redevelopment Authority has taken more of a driver's seat on the program and has reached out to plenty other folks in the community. So we'll have, uh, a few other community sponsorships. Sponsorships are open. That's also on the website, uniontownredevelopment.com backslash Story Square. And you can find out how you can sponsor that program. This year, we're incorporating Third Thursday, so June, July, and August, on the third Third Thursday, we'll block off the street. We'll have a whole bunch of vendors. It'll be a larger event than just the regular concert where we just have a live band and just maybe a few sponsored, uh, vendors. So we're excited to hear that. If you're a vendor and you want to learn more, it's on the website and/or contact us. We'll send you the link and you can get registered. And unfortunately, the awning is not holding up at Story Square, if you've seen it, um, through it. Uh, it is in the process of an insurance claim, so we hope to be able to move that along. We reached out to six companies in a fifty-mile radius and only two of them was able to bid. The project's too big. It's a awning that's not really made anymore, so it is taking time. We hope to be able to have that done, at least for half of the concert series. But it is underway and that will be presented to council for the review of those quotes. In addition to that, we are working on, uh, Story Square Maintenance Agreement. Our attorney at the, uh, Redevelopment Authority is drafting that maintenance agreement to iron out, uh, just exactly how our relationship is with the city to just have that in writing, really. And kind of wrapping up, the downtown business district, uh, we are going to pursue Keystone Community Designation this summer. We hope to be able to look at Main Street and Elm Street programs and maybe prioritize the lighting downtown. Other than that, we have the Economic Development Cooperation Agreement with the city, which I believe is going great. The Planning Commission meets March thirteenth, um, where we will discuss the request for proposals for the second phase of the Comprehensive Plan. And also under the Cooperation Agreement is the Landlord Registration Ordinance. I encourage all landlords to give me a call. I will be reaching out to many landlords over the next two weeks. We will have a meeting on March twenty-sixth at six P M., location to be determined. We want to talk with you about the, the new things that we're considering to incorporate in the ordinance. We want to make it an incentive for landlords. We want to encourage landlords to work with us. We want to hear the issues landlords face. And, um, actually, instead of just being kind of all rogue and making things up, we want to hear from you so, um, so we can discuss it. We have a lot of great ideas. I think that, um, the meeting is going to be very, uh, lively. So, last thing, the Blight Remediation Grant that was received, that was here with the city, was nearly expired. I was able to buy us some time so we could move forward with the Blight Remediation Planning. And I'm just proud to say that although we're not ahead, we're not behind. And we're aligned with the region. I, uh, took lead on coordinating a regional blight, uh, work group meeting. And it's exciting that there's other, uh, boroughs, municipalities in the region that are in our same situation, so I'm going to learn from them. We have a blight task force that on April fourth, recommendations will be made to City Council to appoint those individuals on the board. Um, we're working with Community Action, Mallory McCoon, who oftentimes works with different properties. And if you have any suggestions for someone to be on the Blight Remediation Task Force, uh, give us a call. Besides that, we have a lot of grants coming up this year. We met with, uh, both of our legislators in our February welcoming the legislators month. I just made that up. And we- I just made that up, and we welcomed them into city hall and shared with them where we're spending our energy, and they seemed very happy to have the meeting, and we've, we'll continue to have meetings like that. Any questions? Thank you.
As always, thank you, Crystal. Fire Department, Chief Con. Yes, sir.
That is a tough report to beat, so I'm not even gonna try. Crystal, congratulations on, on your two with that funding. That's, that's excellent. Good work. Bill, we're glad to see you back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
And Kim, congratulations. We wish you the best in your further ventures, so thank you for everything.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, I always start out with a rundown of our incidents for the month, so for the month of February twenty twenty four, we had eleven fire-related incidents. These included five building fires, four trash fires, and two outside, excuse me, two outside storage fires. We, we've been getting smacked pretty hard with structure fires. We've had a couple this month, too, as well, so it's been pretty busy as far as that goes. We had thirty-three rescue-related incidents, twenty-two of those being motor vehicle collisions, five of those with injuries, six lockout or gain access for the EMS crews, one extrication of a vanilla injured person from a building where, where we assisted EMS crews in getting them out, one animal rescue, one rescue standby, and one ring removal. We had six hazardous condition incidents. These included two carbon monoxide incidents, three gas leaks, and one power line down. Had one general public service assistance, one cover assignment for another fire company, and twelve fire alarm activations, so busy enough month for us again. Also report on our training that our personnel have either taken or conducted. We had over sixty-four man hours of training this month for the month of February within the fire department. I'd actually like to offer a special congratulations to one of our career firemen who achieved another certification level on the, through the professional qualifications board certification, that'd be Career Fireman Johnny Rulli. He achieved Fire Instructor Two, so congratulations to Johnny. Apparatus and equipment updates, folks, thank you for voting yes for the maintenance. We're gonna have Engine Three due for inspection and preventative maintenance by the end of the month, so we're gonna get it scheduled and get it to the garage. Just a couple miscellaneous things, folks have probably heard, we had a high-rise fire here recently in the city a couple days ago, up on the ninth floor, I'm not gonna say the occupancy. These high-rise fires can be very challenging, very tricky. Our biggest concern as always, number one, it's, you got your work cut out for you to get up to the fire floor, especially your eight, nine, ten floors up and that, but our biggest concern is getting the occupants out of there. You know, you have a community under one roof, basically, and you folks hear us say all the time about us going out, doing fire prevention, doing fire drills or public outreach, so on and so forth. Here was a case where it really paid off, really paid off. Those folks knew what to do, they reacted properly, so that's always a good thing. Nobody other than the maintenance man who discovered the fire sustained any kind of injuries, and I hope he's doing okay. I'm hearing that he's doing pretty good, so crisis averted and could have been a bad situation, it turned out all for the better. Something else I'd like to remind the public, too, real quick, if you see our apparatus working on a fire scene, whether you're on foot, be it foot traffic, traffic in a car, so on and so forth, just for your safety, we don't want to see anybody get hurt. You know, a lot of times we'll see folks come kind of up, up close to the, to the fire apparatus while it's operating. Be careful, you know, reroute and go around it, so it's like I said, we, we don't want to see anybody getting hurt, so. And then finally, last but not least, we got a big crowd here. What is tonight, everybody?
Bingo.
Bingo. You're too late now, but we'll see you next week. Any questions or comments? I think that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Police Department, Chief DeWitt.
Evening, Aaron. Really, really evening, at this point. So a couple things, Kim, congratulations on your retirement.
Thanks, DJ.
Thank you for everything you've helped me learn in the two years that I've had to grow, is the best way to put it. I had to learn a lot of things with city government and Kim helped me along that process as well as Shane. So thank you, guys. Look forward to working with you in a much higher capacity now as well, Shane. Crystal, as a resident of the city and an employee of the city, it is extremely refreshing to hear someone bringing in that amount of money to make this city better, so thank you for all the work you're putting in, and the fire department did, and he's, yeah, you deserve that. And, and the fire department, he's underestimating what they actually did with that, that structure fire the other day. I was on that, it was a mess. In the middle of the day, to see the amount of members that showed up and the volunteers that also showed up from other departments, a really good example of how departments can work together to, to achieve a mission. We didn't go into that building, because we don't go into high-rise fires, but we did as much traffic control as we could and, and assisted them, so good, great job on your guys' side.
Same, thank you, Chief.
Yep. So going into the monthly statistics, I'll be brief here. So during the month of February, the Uniontown Police Department responded to seven hundred and thirty-four calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included twenty-five vehicle accidents, three assaults, one fraud, twenty-eight welfare checks, twenty-two domestic, domestics, four assist fire calls, sixteen disorderly conducts, forty-nine traffic complaints, twenty-four EMS assists, nineteen assists other police departments, fifteen harassments, three shots fired, seventeen alarms, eighteen thefts, three public intoxications, sixteen animal complaints, and sixty-five suspicious persons, persons activities or vehicles, and one overdose. Officers made a total of forty-seven criminal arrests, issued thirty-two non-traffic citations, and a hundred and fourteen traffic citations. We also conducted our vehicle and foot patrols at the city parks as well as the parking garage, parking garage is, and the Sheepskin Trail. During the month of February, code enforcement opened thirty-three new cases. Of those thirty-three cases, seventeen were closed, three were sent certified letters to remedy their issues. Code enforcement is working closely with Crystal to seek remedy in the area of Markle Street, which is a heavy blight issue. A burnout residence was also demolished by the owner on Lunn Avenue, and Yum Yum's Bagel Cafe on Morgantown Street, as everyone has seen if you're driving by, is also in the process of demolition by the property owner. Mayor and council, any questions? No?
Is there any ETA on when Mr. Elias is gonna get the debris cleaned up from the Bagel Cafe?
That is something I'll touch base with Officer Camper with and just see if he can get a status update on that, so we can start pushing that a little bit quicker.
Thank you.
It is an eyesore, I, I agree, and it's also a safety hazard next to a school, so we'll start to make sure Officer Camper's leaning into that a little bit harder.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief, as always. Director of Public Works, I see Mr. Paul Wilensky is here. Trace, do you have anything to bring for us? Okay, very good. I guess this brings us to public comment. Our rules and regulations are on the door. Be respectful of everyone's time, three minutes, and do we have any, any public comment? Mr. Blackburn?
Give me a second, I got some prepared remarks. Let me start with some notes that I took during the meeting. One, you guys just got the packet? That's pretty concerning, you got it today. That seems like some kind of sleaze ball political tactic used in DC that we all, you know, hate. Now, did you find it appropriate, Mr. Billy, to share secret report information with me, now that you've admitted it to council?
So it wasn't a secret?
I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talking, you can shut your mouth, so I'll, I'll start it again. Why did you find it appropriate to release secret information that only council had access to? How can the council can trust, trust you? And on top of that, to build on top of that, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Brown called you out earlier in the meeting for lying. This is disturbing misbehavior while in office. Are you willing to resign since your word is garbage? I'm gonna move on.
That's what I wanted to do. Oh, that's exactly what I wanted. That would be exact.
I'm allowed to say it, your word is garbage. You're a liar. She said it, the mayor said it, you're a liar, everybody heard it. I'm just repeating what council has already put on the record. But I want to specifically get a, give a shout out to Mr. Gerke and Mr. Billy for wasting everybody's time last year by hosting the CMU Filling the Gap event. I attended it. Mr. Billy and Mr. Mayor both sat on the advisory board, and so far, everything that they've suggested, you know, we're rated the worst city in the state, and CMU is one of the top twenty-four colleges in the country with some of the top minds in the country, and I don't know if you guys know this, America, in my opinion, is the top, is the top country. So we have some of the top minds in the world, working to improve one of the worst cities in the state, and you guys seem to wholeheartedly reject it, all sorts of suggestions by them, including the city manager. It took you until Mr. Brent Roberts complained about the ballers. There's still no enforcement of trash being thrown everywhere. Someone else sent me another area of the city that had just mounds of bags, trash bags for rats and rodents. There are still no traffic control devices implemented to slow down the speeders and dangerous drivers, which run the stop sign by my house every single day. This is gonna deter tourists from coming here, because nobody wants to get hit by a car. There's no bike lanes, and here's some of the things that they wanted for kids. They wanted like bike lanes, skate parks, tennis courts, community pools. The council has instead doubled down on baseball, which is a great sport, I played it, but it's a team sport that is cost prohibitive to low-income kids. I don't know if you guys have kids or if you look for gloves or bats, they're each hundreds of dollars, and low-income kids, now you have a team of kids, say you got five on five, you still need several thousand dollars worth of equipment for those kids to go out and play, so it, it's a, a great sport. I love baseball, but I think there's ways to serve our underprivileged communities a little bit more, maybe serve those communities first, and that could help with the crime and the gangs we're seeing in our youth. Now, the weather is also a reason why baseball isn't a very good sport for the whole community, because it's limited to good weather, it's also limited to the number of teams that can play. Again, I'm a fan of the baseball, I played baseball when I was a kid, but the glaring rejection on, or idea that you guys rejected is the city manager position. The reasons for that position, there's been many voices that support it and many angles that they've come at for that support, but the most consequential is its ability to combat the corruption that's on full display tonight. Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have. Reverend Gray, I'm sorry.
Robert Gray, and I'm a resident of Uniontown City. I just have, need to have my mind clear with council. Over at Baby Park, the new parking lot, is it, was there an agreement made between South Union and Union Town that they could park there and overload that parking lot every night that I come by there? Or, don't you all know anything about it? Ms. Brown?
I'm made aware of it, that, because I live in the area, so I see it crowded a lot. I am not aware of any agreement with the city, as, you know, for them to park there. I am against them parking there and utilizing that space, only because they have a huge parking lot behind the building, so there's parking available, but I have nothing written with them, they shouldn't be utilizing that space like that, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what, before I got here, because like we discussed earlier, there's things in place before I got here, but I don't know, the mayor got to answer that.
I was, I was just wondering, because they are using that parking lot, but the, it's, the usage of the building across the street, which is in South Union, is only for South Union residents, but they're using Union Town Park.
Is the sports complex?
Yes.
Is available to all the public? It is not just?
Oh, it's now available to all the public, because I know in the past, there's South Union Rec and all those things are only for the kids of South Union.
Yeah. I did hear them say they would do stuff with the kids.
The, the, the sports complex, to my knowledge, has eighty-city kids ready to go to the sports park.
Okay.
I just heard that one time.
Okay. I just needed you cleared up, because there, as my awareness, there was never any agreement between the city of Union Town of Baby Park Parking Lot and that complex, which is in South Union.
Not that I know of, like I said, and then I want to put it on record as well, so there's not, so I want to also put on record and just to say, that's where we have our farmer's market, so I would just like South Union, that rec center to be all notice that they might want to stop using it, because that's the board's space for the farmer's market.
Well, I'm not against them using it, I just need for myself some clearance of...
No, there's no agreement. At least the, the mayor decided wasn't, so they're just on it.
Thank you, Reverend.
So Reverend, if I, if I could just add to that, you know, there are so many things in the city that South Union and North Union and the city, we, we have these verbal agreement partnerships, and, and you touched on something right there, is, you know, we're, you're utilizing a parking facility of the cities, and then we have citizens also saying that this recreational facility is open to the city, to the kids of the city. You also touched base on that there is facilities in South Union and also North Union that the city can, the city, the children of the city cannot participate in those. And, you know, my idea of a greater Union Town is a day where Union Town, North Union, and South Union are one. We have got to get into more municipal cooperations and agreements. Some of these are verbal, some may go down on paper. This looks like this is something that's gonna actually have to go on paper. I also want to urge my South Union Township supervisors, just to let them know that, that, you know, that isn't the intent of everybody to, to want to exclude the township from using that. I think that we can come to a good agreement. Councilwoman has stated a perfectly good date that, that it's not good for the city, and that's on, on Saturdays when we have our farmer's market, which is very important to the city as well. I just want to urge my colleagues here at the table that let's not make these hasty decisions, because we don't agree with working with one another, or we feel that one township should do more for another. You know, we, we are the one five four zero one, we are, we are all Union Town, even though we are divided by these imaginary jurisdiction lines that you can't see, and we've touched base on that as well. I want to thank the, the Township of South Union for actually being in that, that position where they can, they can dedicate those funds to build such a project like that that the city cannot. The city's not in a position where we can build something like that. It would take us years of collecting CDBG monies or collecting donations to get something like that, and, and I agree, it is important, I, you know, as much as I don't like to see, you know, it kind of makes us feel like we're being taken advantage of, and, and I get that, but having conversations with the supervisors, both within South, we are in a really good position where we're working well together, intermunicipal, with our sewage authority. We are doing more working projects together now than we ever have. Our working relationships between our fire departments from the city and outside are in a better position than they ever have. I think it is time to, to actually get something penned on paper, but just to explain, you know, give a, a good, a little explanation for that, that, you know, and yes, some of us do talk more than others, but we all have the same purpose that we want to achieve here for the city. This is something that we're actually gonna probably have to get an agreement on, just so we can talk about them at certain times. Thanks for bringing that up.
Very good. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have, Ms. Marshall.
Being resolved by the city council of the city of Union Town, the council hereby adjourns to meet April fourth, twenty twenty four, at five p.m. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
See you next month.
Great. See you, Mr. [inaudible].